It's 6:30, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Anybody that doesn't have the informational packet there is on the backs of the table, please take a minute and wrap that information. While you're doing that, I'll introduce myself. I'm Ron Cameron, I live in Rutherford. I have no skin in this game at all, so I'm not here for anybody's side. And that's why they asked me to come, because I had no prejudice either way. I'm only here to help guide the process, keep it civil. And we're gonna begin the process in a moment by all these people introducing themselves. Then there's gonna be a PowerPoint presentation and then an opportunity to ask questions. That's specifically on the school funding formula for the SAD 44. Ask first that everybody shut their cell phones off. And hopefully I've got mine shut correctly, so it doesn't go off in the middle of the aisle. We're going to try... I'm gonna keep the individual speeches or talks to two minutes apiece. I want to try to get everybody an opportunity to speak. And when you come to the microphone, please come to that microphone over there so everyone can hear you. It's right in the middle of the aisle. Because in order to have this meeting, get the information out clearly, everybody has to be able to hear. So it's a common courtesy, please come to the mic. I'll keep you to two minutes. I won't let you get up again until everybody else has had a chance to speak. I don't want anybody to dominate the meeting. And the last thing I want to happen is the meeting personal attacks. These issues are contentious, but it's not about people, it's about the issues. So please keep your comments to the issues. Don't attack anybody personally, and I think we'll have a good evening. When you do come to the mic, would you please identify yourself and what town you're from? So that we all know who's speaking. So let's begin the meeting with Ron. You would introduce yourself and what town you represent, please.
Ronnie Deegan, I'm chairman of the board of Woodstock.
I'm Maxfield, town manager of Woodstock.
Maybe you should use that microphone, folks, it's lame now. After I just asked everybody else to do that.
Sean Kaufman, selectman, Town of Woodstock.
I'm Joel, selectman, Greenwood.
Kim Sparks, Town manager, Greenwood.
Krista Mason, town clerk, Bethel.
Christine Landis, Town manager of Bethel.
Don Bennett, chairman of the board, selectman in Bethel.
Peter Southman, selectman, Bethel.
Lloyd Spencer, selectman, Bethel.
Andrew Whitney, selectman of Bethel.
Gary Wade, chairman, selectman, Newry.
Amy Bernard, Town administrator, Newry.
Jim Largis, selectman in Newry.
Okay, thank you. Unless there are any questions, we're gonna go right into the PowerPoint presentation. And then the Town manager of Bethel is gonna make that happen for us. And at the end of that presentation, we'll have time for questions and answers. And hopefully can get all the information out that everybody wants to know. Turn it over to you.
Mr. Cameron, if it's okay, I believe each of the towns that have a forum need to open their selectmen's meeting.
Okay. Ron?
Yep. I'm gonna open the selectmen's meeting for Woodstock.
Newry does not have a forum.
Yes, Don Bennett again, and I will convene the board of selectmen for this special meeting here on November 2nd, 2017.
Town of Newry will open their selectmen's public hearing.
Just for your information, I think you all know this, but this tonight is just information. There will be no voting on any issues. The voting will be on the 7th, is that correct?
That is correct, at the polls. Yep. If everybody's okay, I'll stay seated so you can see the PowerPoint. This was the meeting that was supposed to happen Monday. Unfortunately, we were not able to get here. Last spring, first of the summer, the four town managers and chairmen of the boards got together and decided to work on a proposal to send to the voters regarding a school refunding formula. So you will see the spreadsheets coming up. But full disclosure on these presentation sheets, that the budget numbers you're gonna see were from a previous year's budget, because we prepared these sheets way long time ago. The proposed refunding formula sheets do not include adult education or Region 9 numbers. And this is what's most important, is these sheets are just a snapshot in time. Everything... This is saying everything's gonna stay exactly the same, which isn't true. Town assessments change, school population changes, valuations in the town change, county budget changes. So take it with a grain of salt. It's just to show you an example. And I apologize if it is a little bit difficult to see, it's a lot of data. On the back, Bethel did print their sheets. So looking at this spreadsheet that you should have in front of you, you'll see that we did a calculation for 100% valuation, which is what we are currently at for all four towns. And then we did a proposal on 100% pupil cost if we were to change the cost to the school. Currently, Bethel pays $2.828 million. You'll see it on your sheet. And with the county and the town budget, we are approximately at $5.9 million. With a proposed mil rate of 4.07. Now, that's, again, the board of assessors change it, we are at 13.5, because they have that discretion. Looking at the proposal that we drew up as four towns, we decided on a 95-5 ratio, which means 95% assessment, 5% student population, for two years. A 90-10 for three years, an 88-12 for three years, and then ending up with an 85-15 for two years. Do you want me to detail these numbers, or you have them in front of you for Bethel? Is everybody okay with that? On the bottom here, I did analyze exactly what we thought the mil rate would change with those, going from approximately 4.07, ending up in year eight at 14.74. Over that time, approximately a .47 change in our mil rate, half a mil. On a $100,000 home in Bethel, it would increase over the eight years about $108.
As you see, Greenwood's numbers aren't quite as scary as the rest of the group here. Greenwood, in the first, would be almost $3,000, and go up to about $8,000 at the end of it. So when Greenwood sat down with everyone, we were pretty much going to Woodstock and to Bethel, because you're the ones that are gonna take the biggest fight here. Greenwood can afford this, it's minimal. We don't expect any huge influx of students to Greenwood to change these numbers drastically. So it's pretty much up to Woodstock and Bethel if they wanted to make this happen, and if it was palatable for them. So here we are.
These were only in alphabetical or not?
So if this should pass, the savings, quote-unquote, in Newry would be $127,768.53 for the 95-5 period. And then 90-10 would be the same exact amount. For 88-12, it would be an additional $51,107.41. And in year eight, it would be $76,661.12. We did not calculate the savings in the mil rate, because the conversation that we have had at town meeting was this was not about reducing our mil rate. It wasn't about reducing the burden to the residents and non-residents of Newry. It was about reallocating that money for a different purpose. And so we chose not to show you what that impact would be on Newry's mil rate. But we have above $400,000 a mil cost in Newry, so this is not significant at all. Maybe 55 cents over the eight years, should it even...
Woodstock. It's after. The story is the same. However, Woodstock's mil rate would go up 56 cents over the period of time, over the seven, eight-year period. A $100,000 house, the tax would go up $40.02 over that same period of time. A $250,000 house would go up $80 over that period of time. So it's not huge by any means, but it is an increase. And like has been said a number of times, this is only as if it happened today. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future, as we all know. We may have other expenses that could change that mil rate drastically. But that's, in a nutshell, what would happen with Woodstock.
We, as town managers and chairmen of the board, and also all the boards, felt it was very important to alert the residents why we supported this as a group. So on the next four slides, you'll see the reasons. I believe each of these boards spoke about it at their regular selectman's meetings. But Bethel's reasons for support. The change in the funding formula shifts the cost from one formula to another. This method is currently used in about 30%, it's an estimated, of main school districts. This process will allow a cost-sharing proposal that will be consistent amongst all the towns in the district. If there is a change in assessment of student population, it will affect each individual town. It is a fair system. It says the four towns listen to Newry's concerns. And if you recall in the spring, when we all went to the legislature for the LDs, basically Augusta told us to go back and rectify it ourselves. So this was our way of accomplishing that.
Okay, Greenwood was performed as same as the other towns, to go back and work this out amongst ourselves. So we invited our towns, the towns, to come into the town office and sit down. And we started discussing a plan that would be handled for all towns involved, and would help preserve our district and our community. Our students and our school staff deserve this stability, and this plan will make that possible.
Newry's select board supports the refunding formula, because throughout numerous public hearings, a majority of Newry voters expressed that the 2005 educational funding exemption was unfair. This current compromise abolishes that exemption, which says that the district communities
Woodstock's reason for the support of the formula was the Woodstock Board of Selectmen and Town Manager are supporting the cost-study referendum that offers a compromise to Newry in their efforts to reduce their per pupil cost of education in the MSAD #44 school district in an effort to keep the school district together. We also think it's important to note that the school board has voted to restructure itself, giving three votes each to Greenwood, Woodstock, and Newry, and six to Bethel, thereby giving Newry more say on the board than in the past.
Thank you. At this point, we're gonna open up to questions. Once again, I ask that you go to the mic, and we'll give each speaker two minutes. If your question is directed at any specific town manager or select person, please say so. Otherwise, when they ask the question, the individual that feels most qualified to answer will answer. So state your name and any questions. Who's first?
Steve White from Newry. I was selecting Newry for 35 years, including 2005. My question is, and I don't know if it's to perhaps Newry, or perhaps it's not to the select boards at all, but it would seem as though the other towns are going to go through this sacrifice process, and they ought to have get something in return. And it seems as though there ought to be a promise from Newry that they would stay with the district for the 10 years of this formula. I don't know if I can give a promise, or will take it to the voters and let the voters decide. It's our hope that the voters in the town of Newry will agree with that. Personally, I can't answer that as a promise enough. So you're saying you would take a vote to the Newry voters as to whether they want to stay in the district for 10 years? That will be a question that we will have at town meeting in March. On whether to stay in the district or continue the withdrawal. I can't give a promise. It seems as though it's kinda hard for people to vote themselves additional cost if they don't know what's coming to them from the other side. We realize that, but, you know, there will be a vote.
So the funding formula process is pretty strict, and it's explicit in state law, that you can choose to put erroneous factors into your formula. But if you do choose to do something outside of student population and valuation, then it triggers a 66% vote requirement throughout the whole district at the refunding formula committee at the SAD level. We discussed that, and that was not something that that committee was interested in promoting. So we did at this level talk about having that be a factor in the conversation. And it wasn't just Newry, it was everybody needs to stay in. If we're going to do this, the district will stay together for the eight-year period. And we all agreed to that. But it was not something that the committee at the SAD 44 level was willing to trigger to cause that 66% vote to become necessary to pass.
So my thoughts is...
Thank you.
It's too bad that withdrawal and refunding are so connected. And I get why they are, it's impossible to not connect them. But the angst that we put up there, that I think most of the town of Newry has, when the law changed in 2005, it changed fast. For whatever reason, it changed fast. There wasn't a lot of public comment on that. And the two questions that I keep hearing is, so why are we singled out? You know, why are we different than the rest of the state? And why no public comment? And the answer we most commonly get is, you can afford it, so don't worry about it. It's not your money, it's all second homeowner's money. And it's for the good of the community. So I get we can afford it. I get we have all the second homeowners. Reality is, every town here, at least 50% of the people paying our taxes are second homeowners. We're fortunate, we're lucky. They have responsibility, just like we do, to educate our kids. There's nothing more important that we do than educate our kids. And it seems like this is a fair, equitable way to do it. It was great to hear a couple of comments here saying, "We hear ya." Because I think that is the piece that is most frustrating to Newry, is we keep saying, "Hey, hey, hey, hey," and nobody's hearing us. And this is people hearing us, and we certainly appreciate that. So I'll finish up. I'm hoping people can keep the two issues separate. Let's get it a level playing field, and then we'll see where the discussion on withdrawal goes. As everybody in the room knows, I am not a proponent of withdrawing.
Another question from the audience? Yes, sir, please come to the mic. I feel I need it, but I'll stand back. We understand.
Thank you. I'm Ron Savage from Bethel. First off, I'd like to thank the leaders of the towns. I've been advocating for this for a long time, get together and work this out. I think Newry's been mistreated. They've been excellent members. I think we owe it to them. I don't see us as making a sacrifice. I see it as almost giving them a rebate. You know, we owe it to them. They have very few students. They pay the bulk of the school budget. They had very little say for years. You know, imagine the CEO of the company, he started a company, his employees have more say. He put the money in, he started, but his employees have more say than the CEO of the company. I don't get it. I appreciate Newry working with us. I don't think we need to demand from Newry that they need to stay in the district if we pass this. I think we need to show them goodwill. And I think that Newry taxpayers will do the right thing. I'm also not willing to gamble. I pay about $60,000 in human taxes for the businesses in the land that I own. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, but if Newry did withdraw, let's say this vote was shut down. If this vote does get shut down, I wouldn't blame Newry for withdrawing. I would encourage them to. You know, this is good faith that happened on our part. But if this did get shut down, and Newry did withdraw, our taxes are looking at 30%, 40% increase in Bethel? Approximately?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not trying to get an exact number. But do you want to say, well, this is roughly a 10% increase in Bethel, am I correct?
Currently, yes.
Well, at the longest level, like, the worst scenario is roughly a 10% increase?
It'd be half a mil currently, as is proposed.
At the final?
At the final, yes. If Newry withdrew, and we picked up the roughly $3 million as three towns, where I figured it was 3.2 mils Bethel would increase.
So that's an approximate 25%, 30% increase? Correct? Approximately 25% to 30% increase? So, I mean, if we're all business people, we're all homeowners, we have to manage our budgets. I'd much rather give them a 7% to 10% rebate, or rebate, as they call it, because I won't call it rebate. But then take a chance on a 25% or 30%. And not to mention the money, but what would it do to our schools? What would it do to our students? What would it do to our teachers? You know, the quality of the school, they're working on it. I get that they're working on it, and I appreciate that. I strongly urge that people to vote this in, show goodwill to Newry. Don't look at it as a sacrifice. Show it as goodwill. They deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else in the public? Go ahead, Ron.
Okay.
Yep.
Turn it on.
There's no pictures, Ron, so...
I don't have my glasses on. Ronnie Deegan, selectman, Chair of the Board of Woodstock. When we went ahead and actually sat down and took a look at this whole scenario, we actually stood back and we said to ourselves, what is important? What is important in this whole process? And one of the things that always stood out, number one, was the district itself, the sovereignty of the district, of the community. That was very important for us at Woodstock. And then we took a look at, okay, if we feel as though this is important, what's that gonna do to our taxpayers? How much money would that actually impact them to have what we feel is all important? If Newry pulled out right today, and you have to understand that we're actually dealing with just the baseline budgets that we have right now, the county, the school, and our town budget, we would have to go ahead and actually add $2.76 on our mil rate. $2.76, just to go ahead and flatline what we're doing. For us, it's much more feasible to go ahead and actually, if we believe in keeping the district together and solving, and keeping the community together, we could handle the 56 cents over eight years. One of the things that we didn't like when the first proposal came out was actually the three-year process. We at Woodstock thought that was too extensive for us to handle. We would like to have a slower increase. And that's why we went back and we actually are supporting the eight-year, which comes out to, you know, that 56 cents, that we can handle over that period of time. So that was our process and our thought process when we got to this point.
Thank you, Ron. I told you I didn't have it shut off, right? I thought I did, but, anyway, it's out in the hall, they can talk to the wall now. Anybody else have any question or comment? Yes?
Mike Stephen from Bethel. I just, I'm sorry, apologize for late in the game, but I just... So the eight-year program, that it's gonna stop at that ratio, at that point? And is this all the good faith system? I just wondered, is it... Is there a binding nature to this? Or it seems very reasonable, the formula proposed, like, what, you know, in someone's back of the mind, what's someone saying, "Well, it's a new vote, a year, or two years." So is there any binding nature to this, to the towns?
Down here.
Being in a leadership...
I'm trying to make you look bad, Ron.
Being in a leadership role, there's one thing you have to go ahead and actually, when you're working with other people in leadership roles, you have to go ahead and take a look and believe in their integrity. That's a key when we're actually negotiating or setting down. Is there anything in writing that binds them, that they're gonna stay as far as Newry and stay with this? No. But in this committee, in these meetings that we had, in this leadership, there was integrity in there, that Newry and in their leadership was going to go ahead and actually support what we said in there, in their community, and the reasons why we did what we did. So integrity, at times when you actually sit down and you're in a leadership role, sometimes you've gotta believe in integrity.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to respond to Mike? Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Scott Cole, I live in Bethel. You all know pretty much how I feel on the issue. I think a vote no is in order on Tuesday. At first, I'd comment on Mike Stephen. You asked a question, is there binding nature? No. It's a short answer, it took a long time to get to a no. Would any of the town officials here, would you make an agreement to let go of $1,000 out of your town office without something back in writing? Would you do that with a paving contractor? Woodstock? No, okay. Thank you. Bethel, would you make a deal like this without something in writing? Would you guarantee shipping out $1,000 each year without something in writing back?
We probably would not if it were a paving contractor.
What makes this issue different, Woodstock or Bethel?
You are now matching apples and oranges. We're talking... We are talking about, for us, the sovereignty of the district. Totally different whether or not I'm gonna give $1,000 for a painter. And it depends on every situation.
Thank you. The cost shift, talking now about the Newry tax base, the... My understanding is about 90% of the property taxes paid to Town of Newry actually come from addresses outside of Oxford County, mostly outside of Maine. Is that a true statement? Plus one.
Of course. So...
Are we gonna respond to you?
Okay, go ahead, sure.
Let Scott talk, and then we'll respond at the end. How do you wanna do it?
I don't know, I got the impression from the moderator it was a back-and-forth format, but what is it?
It's back and forth as long as it stays under control. I don't wanna let you stay up longer, Scott, so that nobody else has a chance to speak. Please get your question. Pardon me?
Fair enough, I won't be long.
Okay.
Did you comment on the nature of the Newry tax base? The ownership nature?
So it's 85% non-resident, 15% is... Well, 10% is... It's actually 84, 6, and 10 is our breakdown. But every town in this district, Bethel being 50%, is paid by non-residents. Bethel being 50% is paid by non-residents. Greenwood is 75%. And Woodstock is 66%. So, we're, we're all in this together. And all of our tax bases, the majority of our taxes are being paid by non-residents. The majority of the school bills are being paid by non-residents in this district.
Thank you, so, so the.
One more question, Scott, please. Just one more.
One more? Oh, move on, the, you said, the different presentation, the different towns. Augusta said to do this. Augusta's a very generic term. There's a lot of different pieces of Augusta. What, what did that mean? I was at the same hearings.
Yes, we went to the, um, the Education Committee with you, because of you. And, um, we went to, I believe it was a workshop that they had. And they shot down your piece of legislation and said, absolutely not. And as a matter of fact, they asked that we came back here and deal with our problems locally. And that was heard loud and clear by everyone, maybe except for, for you. I'm not sure.
No personal issues here.
And I just want to, for the record, the Education Committee, uh, worked on a bill. They defeated Fran Hesbell, which I'm glad she sponsored. It wasn't my bill, but it was state reps. Um, the Education Committee actually processed a bill that would make withdrawal guaranteed for towns that petitioned for it. And that was adopted by unanimous consent by the committee. But then when it went to the full legislature, it was defeated, it got pushed back, actually pushed back to committee. So really, really the mandate that you felt really didn't exist in Augusta.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, sir. All be done. I urge everyone to vote no on Tuesday. We can do better than this. Thank you.
Somebody else have a question? Comment?
I believe that the role that I play might.
Please identify yourself.
So I'm Lisa Kim. I represent the District 18, so this area of Maine. Um, I appreciate being here tonight. Um, so, prior to this meeting tonight, I'm just to clarify a little bit of what's coming from Augusta. I spoke with the Chair of Education, Senator Brian Langley. And I asked him, um, because there aren't, it isn't just your town that is, and, and this district, that is dealing with withdrawal issues. This is happening in other places in Maine as well. And the, the goal in Augusta is definitely that towns, they know their own intricacies. They know their communities better. You guys are the best people to make the decision for here. I commend you for getting together, for having this conversation as a group. And you are the ones that should come up with a solution that works for here, for your district. And then in other places in Maine, they, they also need to come up with what works for them. So as much as I can be a resource for you, I would like to be. But this is where it's going to happen. This is, these conversations. And that is why, um, some of the legislation was pulled back. And it's, and it will be considered again in the next session if it's needed in January. If it's not, it will go away. So right now, um, we are actually waiting on you all to, to make the decisions and, and see what you can do. And it's in everyone's best interest that it happens here. And yes, there isn't, there is nothing binding. There's nothing binding, um, in the state budget for education. You know, as much as I'd like to say, sure, this is a guarantee, and you know you're going to get it this year, and then you're going to get it next year. We all know that's not reality, because things change. And I think there is a lot to be said for trusting one another and saying, you're a community here that has so much going for it. You have synergy by working together. And, um, and part of that is, is also building your school together and putting your kids first, and working out what you need to work out as adults for the good of your children, because it matters to all of you a great deal. So if I can be of help, I will be. And that's a little bit, um, from what the discussions are in Augusta. And, you know, we're waiting on you to, to do the right thing here.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else? Yes, sir. I spent eight years in Augusta, and be careful what you wish for to come out of there.
Well, Chair of One. Um, this is kind of a hard situation, I think, for many from Bethel, and, and other towns, that Newry's got it pretty well. You do. I pay taxes in both towns, unfortunately, more in Bethel. But at the same time, there's been a deal negotiated. And the risk, if that doesn't go, I know Scott's optimistic, but if, if that isn't accepted, it could be pretty darn tough on the other towns. So, I think, although we may feel they can afford it, same time, sounds like they were offering a deal, the voters approved it. I guess I'm coming around to the point where, how probably, no vote, so, just my thoughts.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else?
Jane Ryerson, Bethel. I have some comments. Um, the largest taxpayers in Newry come from Sunday River condominiums and associations and those living in subdivisions. The town budget is burdened by dealing with their preparation, tax bills, and property transfers, but not by their roads. Because you see, all subdivisions and condo associations in Sunday River, skiway roads, are all contracted out to private contractors to take care of their roads. So the aforementioned do not burden the town road budget, except heading up to the Sunday River Road until it becomes Sunday River property. It's important to keep that in mind. Out of the over 3,489 tax properties in Newry, 2,962 of those are non-resident owned. Breaking it down, 2,239 are owned by out-of-state residents. 723 are owned by Maine residents but living outside of Newry. And 327 of the 3,489 properties are owned by Newry residents. So that means that one of every resident-owned property is nine non-resident-owned properties. That's 85% of Newry's tax property. Newry will take in $4,274,599 in taxes for the fiscal year 17, '18. Out of that, $3,49,000 goes to the school district, which is about 71.5% of their total tax income. 85% of Newry's $4 million taxable revenue is paid by non-residents, which equals $3,633,409. This means that non-resident taxpayers are supporting the school district. Plus, they have money to spare. That is pretty good, being able to have your total school paid by non-resident taxpayers, who do not burden the school district at all, nor do they burden the town road budget, except in a minor way. Excluding unorganized territories, plantations, and townships, Newry has the lowest mill rate in the county at 9+, and they are third or fourth lowest in the state. Bethel's mill rate is 13+. If Newry needs more money, they could increase their mill rate and still be the lowest in the county. After all, the bulk of the intake would come from your second homeowners. You say you don't want to increase your mill rate. Well, why should I want to increase my taxes? We have no guarantee that Newry will stay. After all, a Newry resident wrote a letter in last week's Citizens, staying regardless of what this petition does, what this withdrawal process does, they're still going to continue to petition for the withdrawal. So we have no guarantee that Newry is going to stay with the district. And I'm off keeping the district solvent and everything. But just to put a few things in perspective. And he also stated that they had to borrow $1,000. Well, a lot of towns do. And it's cheaper to borrow money from banks right now, from municipalities, than it is to use your own, out of your own coffers. So, in closing, um, they could increase your mill rate, instead of trying to put the burden on other towns by threatening withdrawal of the funding of the school district.
Thank you, ma'am. We have, uh, you know, the young, yes, can we? Please identify yourself and what town you're from.
Um, I'm going to speak, I think, on behalf of two hats that are in there. Uh, my name is Kelly Scott. I am a Newry resident.
Thank you.
Um, actually, new Newry resident. I've been a resident for Albany for 14 years, and newly bought a house in Newry. I have a child who is in the second grade at Crescent Park. And I feel fortunate to have a voice, to be able to come and talk about this. Um, I think Sad Budford is a great school district. I would love to see it together, stay together. Uh, my other hat that I'm going to speak on, I'm actually Deputy Clerk for the town of Newry. And I have been Deputy Clerk there since the whole withdrawal process has started. Um, we don't want to put refunding and withdrawal together. They're two separate beasts, but as Jim says, they do tend to collide together. Um, I have the advantage of being in the town office on a daily basis. I have my finger on the pulse of what our residents and what our parents of the kids that we do have in the school district are feeling. And, um, I think they, uh, and this is my personal opinion, um, just because I hear the chatter, um, on a personal basis at the town office. Um, since the process has started, the, I, I, I don't believe, I, I think more information has come out to the residents about the way the formula, uh, wound up being, and then current legislature that went to Augusta. And I think they feel it was unfair. And, um, we should take care of our problems locally. Um, and I, I, this is my personal opinion. I don't, I don't feel that, that people want to withdraw. I think this, this is a great compromise. I do, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thomas Twain in Greenwood. Um, I'm going to ask that everybody, this is very difficult, because I don't know how, there's not a lot of residents here comparatively for the four towns. So I'm not sure how you're going to get the vote out to vote for this, even though I would urge everybody to, between now and next Tuesday. That's going to be very difficult to do. I don't know how you're going to do that. But the town should make a concerted effort somehow, whether it's posters within your town office, whether it's to, that, that each board has said that this should be a yes vote. And to Steve's point, I would urge that not only the town of Newry, but all four towns, next spring, at your town meeting, or in your, uh, when you come to vote, that all four towns make a vote that they not withdraw over the eight- or 10-year period that this is going to be in effect. They are going to collide withdrawal, and this compromise, this compromise is great. Withdrawal, not only would it be disaster, it would be disaster. There's not a number of reasons. We have a lot of elderly citizens on fixed incomes. We have a lot of young families. They just wouldn't be able to afford a 35% or 4% increase should that withdraw. And they do collide in some point, unfortunately, Jim. The other point that, uh, from the business community, where businesses are currently facing mandated, uh, minimum wage increases and so forth, you combine those with a possible 35-plus percent tax increase, that would be disastrous for business and for the area as a whole. Because you'd have businesses that would just say, I'm out, which would be good for the area. So, I would urge everybody to contact anybody that you know, friends, relatives, whatever. And get the word out, get it out via social media, however you want to do it, to get people out to vote for this compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak or ask a question? We'll see. Yes, sir.
My name is Marcell Pollak. I'm the President of Woodstock, along the school board as well. And I want to thank the Selectmen and town managers for getting involved in this. It's very important that we work together to solve this. Um, I wish there was a compromise, a real compromise on the table that was, um, guaranteed, that withdrawal would end. Um, withdrawal unfortunately looms. Um, even the fact that there is going to be a petition drive to raise more money basically puts it back on the school board to then have to spend your tax dollars uh, to continue whatever's going on. So that really is very discouraging to me. I wish that would end. One thing that I really want to say that's very important is, um, I really heard the fact that Newry felt underrepresented. And so, I worked with the school board, and the school board actually helped establish a four-town committee uh, that basically then created a new board restructuring plan. That's really huge. Um, and it has been said and repeated again, as of July 1st, there will be, uh, the weighted votes will be history. No more weighted votes. Right now, uh, Newry had, I think, 6% of the vote, 6.7% of the vote, it was a weighted system. Um, as of July 1st, they will be at parity with Woodstock and Greenwood, will be equal. So, their voice will be heard, uh, and they'll have a third director. Um, so that, I think that is really, really significant. Uh, one question that I have for the panel up here, I'm not sure who is going to answer it, is, given that, that Newry could still withdraw if this passes, um, has anyone tried to figure out what, how this cost funding formula changed, it was approved, would then operate under the three towns? Because then, it's important for everyone to know, that if Newry does withdraw still, that this cost funding formula, if it passes, would then be operational in the three towns. So it would have, it would.
Someone like to answer that question?
So someone, if someone could answer that question. How would that impact, um, the budget? Thank you.
Don't all speak at once.
So, I mean, my understanding that the formula might stay in place, it would be, if we were eight years in, it would be 85%, 15%. Um, and that would just be split among the three towns. The formula would stay the same. Um, it would be a catastrophe financially all the way around. I don't think it would make a difference, um, because that, whatever, $2 or $3 million would be coming out of the school budget. Um, or we'd have to spread it out over the, over the three towns, but I think it would get spread the same way it does now. Just without the fourth player.
But it, it changes the, the numbers here as well, unfortunately.
Sure, it would change, because the.
So, we don't know, what we don't know is how that ratio would change in terms of whether Greenwood would be relatively less impacted than it is now. That could change as well. I mean, that's, that's completely.
Right, that would require recalculations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, yes. We're getting a little bit off the subject here tonight, so let's try to wriggle back.
Very quick. Um, anybody could withdraw. That, that's the only point I want everybody to accept. This is not, Newry's not the only town in the district that has the ability to withdraw. Any town could, any town is safe.
At this point, I think it's safe to say it would be speculation invested. No commitment from anybody to, and I understand your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Brooks Morton. I'm from the town of Newry. And, uh, I'm part of the reason why we're here tonight. Uh, thank you very much for trying to subjugate the good citizens of the town of Newry with your legislation.
Please keep to the subject, sir, not personal.
This is the subject. The subject is, they have been trying to, um, quiet the voice of the Newry citizen who have legitimate concerns. This is the compromise. This is a light. You know, I would support this, and I would campaign for it. Because it's the right thing to do. We're recognizing the injustice of 2005. This will help correct it. I was the second class to graduate from Felster. I don't want to see the district dissipate. You know, there's a lot of good memory, a lot of good friends. But I won't stand by and let my townspeople's voice be squashed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Michelle O'Leary Cole. I'm a resident taxpayer in Bethel. I'm also a taxpayer for Cora Shire in Newry. Uh, three points. One, on the formula right, right now. Talk about fast. This was fast. Matter of weeks, maybe days. And we have this formula here in just a few months, and maybe not even a communication out to the full towns. This is, this is an important vote. I'm glad to see there's more people here. Um, also, we've moved from education to business. Quid pro quo. Heard it over again. You taking some of our, putting more burden of taxes on us? What do we get in return? Quid pro quo. I mean, June 13th, there's a core, majority of Newry's citizens voted to continue with the, with the withdrawal process. Two weeks ago, same day as the public hearing for this formula, Selectmen met with Newry Withdrawal Committee, who's trying to put together, see what the next steps would be for money. It's, it's tough. There's really nothing in return. It's fast. Let's keep the formulas sacred. Let's keep the formulas sacred. Leadership, thank you very much for trying to do something. I would. Leadership, thank you very much for trying to do something, I would have asked for a little more creativity than just, could seemingly be this easy way out of just pushing the burden of taxes, um, onto the other towns. Maybe within Newry, uh, there's been some, see if there's other creativity that can be done to help the residents of, of Newry. And lastly, the, the current formula, the one that exists now, we've been made to feel that this is somehow unfair or wrong. The history of it remains today. Thirty years ago, Sunday River started putting value in, I personally put value into Sunday River, and it, towns benefiting from it. There was a social responsibility then that we would roll the pie and everybody would get a greater piece of pie. And this isn't the first rodeo with the formula challenge, we've been through this before, and there is symbiotic relationship, especially between Newry and Bethel. My God, you can't even get to the other side of Newry without going into Bethel. And with the education piece and then with the municipal piece, there's quite a break, as you've heard, with the Newry residents on the municipal, municipal piece. On the education piece, it takes a village, it takes a community, it takes these four towns to keep Sunday River going. Where do you think the employees live that run Sunday River? They live in Bethel. I mean, there's families right here that work in that Sunday River and they live in Bethel and repaying to educate them. And what about the inconveniences and the public services? Bethel has to plow, plow the road so people get to Sunday River, that's just one piece of it. And I guess when saying it's symbiotic, and that was thirty years ago, that was the, that was the deal. So anything short of changing the formula, formula, it feels like there's a violation of the deal. And I would just ask people to think about that, think if we could be more creative, to help the Newry residents, and then thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to have, ask comments or questions? If not, I'd like the second round of the line. Okay, yes, Ron. Yes, you can. You'll be next, Ron is next.
Again, Ron's standing in Bethel. One, one thing that's not being thought of is, what happens if Newry pulls out, if we wrote this down and Newry pulls out? Christine, the town, how does the town get their money? Taxes, excise taxes and miscellaneous income, correct? But the majority, to keep our taxes down, new taxes, new homes, a major apartment, you have two to three million worth of new valuations?
Approximately, I think, five million.
Five million. So think about this, it hasn't been discussed, and this is the only reason, might be our second time. Imagine Bethel gets a thirty-five percent increase, Greenwood gets a thirty percent increase if Newry pulled out, Woodstock hits a twenty-five, thirty percent increase. Now you're a second homeowner, and you're coming to Bethel, and I'm a real estate broker and a builder, so I deal with these people a lot of times. And a lot of questions, how, well, what are my taxes going to be roughly in my, on my new house? And imagine if they hear that the tax is going to be four thousand in Bethel and two thousand in Newry. It's a pretty major thing because our bills go up every year, the town's bills, all the town's bills go up every year.
Bethel went down this year.
But, but, but I'm saying, not necessarily taxes, but our expenses go up, your, your, your health insurance, your employees, you give your employees a raise, things like that. So imagine how this is going to compound where the people are going to choose Newry as a building site. So we're going to compound this, our taxes will actually shoot up exponentially with the fact that these aren't going to have need builds in Bethel, they're going to have need build in Newry. They're not going to build in Woodstock, they're not going to build in Greenwood, they're going to build in Newry. Good for Newry, extremely scary for us. Imagine if we don't have the five million for new, of new taxes to help offset the taxes. And I also wanted to sort of advocate for the second homeowners. They come out, they're, they're our industry. We don't have the shoe factory, the mills, um, the jobs, the factory jobs, we unfortunately are, we came to them and thank God they're here. You know, how many people in the room, just by a show of hands if you'd be willing, make some sort of a living or somebody in your family, make some sort of a living off the second home, whether you provide firewood, you mow their lawn, you paint their house, you sell them goods at your store, you have to build your house, you're a plumber, you're an electrician, how many people have a family member or individually make money from a second homeowner in Bethel? Or Newry or Greenwood? What would we be doing without them? Right? Look at Rumford. Look at some of these towns. We act like we have problems, you know, lucky we are. Newry's been a great neighbor. I don't care if, I don't want Newry to have to guarantee us that they're going to stay in the district. It's like being in a relationship, and one person in the relation, relationship wants, that's what we are, right? We're in a relationship of towns, citizens in a relationship of towns. So imagine you're in a personal relationship and you're treating the other one, sort of, one feels like you're treating them unfairly, and you say, listen, I'll treat you a little bit better if you sign a thing saying you're going to stay with me for ten years. That's how ridiculous asking Newry to stay, you know, we're going to treat you better and fair if you sign a thing saying you're going to stay with me for ten years, it's ridiculous. I hope this passes.
Thank you, Ron. Scott?
Scott called Bethel, didn't intend to come back, but if you're letting second votes, I'll go. Uh, there, there's, there's a myth that Newry properties are mistreated, there's a uniform tax rate applied to all, all property in all four towns. The mill rate for schools is somewhere eight or nine bucks a thousand, something like that at full value, I'm not sure, but, thank you, six, six thirty a thousand. That, six thirty per thousand is the rate applied to every single piece of property in the four towns, it's not more in Newry or less in Newry, Newry year-round residents pay the same tax rate for schools that I do, that my neighbors do, people in Newry do, people in Greenwood, this stuff, it's all the same. This referendum proposes to change that and move away from a uniform tax rate. Schools are such an expensive proposition and the benefit is so abstract to the, to the day-to-day lives of people, the only way, the only fair way is a uniform tax rate. I urge you to vote no on the referendum, keep it the way it is, if people have better ideas, we can talk about it beyond that, but there's absolutely nothing wrong with the current method, it's the way it is. I'll make one more comment on the nature of the value of Newry. That value is, is a product of a thousand to two thousand people showing up in Newry from outside of Newry every day to, to provide a high-quality, world-class ski experience. Rumors, snowmakers, restaurants, toilets that need to work, all that. These people don't live in Newry, they come from somewhere else. The, the relation of the value is much like, like a mill town where, where the mill is nothing, that the people showing up for work, but in this case, we're proposing to give the mill the break and the workers pay more. That doesn't make any sense. Let's keep a uniform tax rate, the way, the way it works across Maine, most kids in Maine are educated under a uniform tax rate to provide the funding. This stuff about school districts, that's all smoke and mirrors. Vote no, keep a uniform tax rate, move forward, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else?
I'll take my second round, I don't, I almost like need to speak, and I don't disagree with what Scott's saying, but burden the hands worth throwing the bush. The risk, if we don't go along with this merger, is tremendous to the other towns.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by someone.
Who?
Second? All of us in favor? Okay, we're going to take a short break, and our next, our next subject will impact Bethel residents for the most part, we're going to talk about wind ordinance, anybody's welcome to stay, but it's a pretty messy, a Bethel issue. Thank you for coming tonight. And thank you for your decorum, I really appreciate the way you people handle yourself.